That is now six fifty-nine. I'm asking everyone to put their phones on silent or vibrate at this time. It is now seven P.M. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I haven't seen you all in about a month now, so I'm glad to be back. And this is our city council regular meeting. It was supposed to be last Tuesday, our first Tuesday of the month, but because of the election, we are doing it this week and next week. Today is Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we always start our meetings with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our councilwoman, Sarah Lucido, is not in today, so she usually does it. So we have our guest, Dan Zander. He is going to honor us today with doing the invocation today, also the Pledge of Allegiance. So I wish that you all would join us in standing as we do the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance at this time. Mr. Zander?
Most gracious God, I thank you so much for this time in the evening, and we just wanted to keep on going to get this counseling meeting smooth, Lord, and we just wanted to do that as soon as we can do. We pray for the council members, the visitors here, and we just wanted to come and join the East Point Council meeting tonight. And I ask this in my name and pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Zander. We're going to start with our roll call. Good evening, Mr. We got Mr. Otis over there? Okay. Ready? Oh, the city manager does it.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Owens.
Here.
And Councilmember Lucido is absent.
Thank you, ma'am.
The approval of the agenda, council?
Madam Mayor, I am looking at the agenda, and there's a few items that I want to table. The first one would be C, the two thousand and twenty-two tax reverted properties. There seems to be a lot of questions that need to be resolved before we can venture into purchasing any type of property. So I would, I guess we should make a motion. One, I've got a couple others. So I would move that we would table item C for tonight's agenda.
Table until when then?
Kim, how long do you, how long do you want this to sit on the table?
Council, Mayor and Council, if I may, we received information from the Macomb County Treasurer's Office that there was recently a Sixth Circuit Federal District Court of Appeals case that was just heard. It is going to be many months, if not years, before a decision is made. There are, there are some, some big questions that have yet to be answered that may put both municipalities and the county at risk. It is suggested that not just table this, but perhaps cancel this item altogether for this year and wait until next year when we have more information. As a result, if the city does not purchase the properties, I did check with the County Treasurer's Office, they will be going to public auction individually unless there are adjacent parcels, in which case they will be sold as a set. But rather than doing the bulk or the batch auction as they've done in previous years, all the properties will be offered for public auction individually. So it's anticipated there will be buyers. I know there are a lot of property management companies that have not purchased properties in a while, but we have a very strong code enforcement team that will ensure that, that the proper work is done.
When is the due date for us to make a decision on buying them or not?
That would be the twelfth. The twelfth, and the payment had to be due on the nineteenth, so there's definitely not going to be an answer anytime soon.
So August nineteenth, that's when we're supposed to submit an answer?
The payment. The answer is due this week, so this is not something that will be decided. The opinion from that court probably won't come down until perhaps December or January.
Madam Mayor, I withdraw my first motion, and I would, my new motion would be that I would move that we eliminate the discussion on the reverted properties until such time that our Assistant City Manager advises that it's time to act on it.
So we don't act on it, we lose the properties?
That is correct.
Anybody else got up here to have anything to say? I want to hear what you all have to say, because the reason why I don't like it to be open to people buying properties is that we don't have any control a little bit. We have a little bit more control when we, we own them and who takes care of them.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a comment on it, Madam Mayor, in response to what you're saying, if I, if there's going to be a second. I don't, I think, I think you called for a second. I didn't hear anybody say second.
Well, we just, okay, well, we want to have a discussion. I want to hear what everybody has to say.
I, I understand, but there's no use discussing something if it's not on the table with a, a motion and a second to the motion.
Anybody like, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just based off of what Ms. Holman said, I don't want to put the city or the county at risk financially, so I just would follow the leading on that and would, I would support it, to remove it.
I would not vote to table.
Okay, one, if I might.
Yes, sir.
One of the issues is that, and I, you know, Kim, you can add if you want, one of the issues is that if we buy a property for five thousand dollars and fix it up for ninety thousand dollars, that's now ninety-five thousand dollars, and we sell it for a hundred thousand, there's a five thousand dollar profit, quote unquote. They're trying to decide in court if the original owner of that property gets that money, or if it's going to be split with the city, or the city gets nothing, or the city gets all of it. So going ahead and buying these pieces of property, not knowing that we'll end up fixing the property, and any profit that we made selling it, we get nothing. So the loss of five properties in our city, not knowing if we're going to make a profit or not, I think is what, what we ought to do, but that's just my opinion.
Madam Mayor, if I may. I think Councilman DeMonico wanted to say something.
I was just, I think we should just vote if we're going to table it or not, and then discuss all these details if it's not tabled.
Yeah, I don't want to table it. I want to discuss it a little bit more, because some of the things that I'm learning today, I didn't know about why we wasn't buying the property, so it's something that I just found out tonight.
Sure, so I think Councilman Curly made the motion, and then it was.
It was seconded by.
Mr. Baker.
Okay. You got a motion and support. Please call the roll. For the tax reverted properties.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Owens?
No.
Okay, well, I think at the time then we'll, I'll go on. I was asked, Councilman Lucido is out of town. She asked if I would recommend or ask that items F, G, and H, the three appointments to the Arts and Culture Diversity Commission be tabled until next week, next Tuesday, when she returns to town. So.
When are those?
Well, I'll make a motion that we table items F, G, and H until next week, if I can get a second.
When are those next meetings?
Next meeting is next Tuesday.
Not now for these appointments? Are they going to, do they need a?
They had one yesterday.
They had one yesterday, so they should be fine if we.
Madam Mayor, if I may, they are having a special meeting next Tuesday evening at seven.
Do they have a quorum? If we don't do this tonight?
Their, their concern actually last night at the meeting that I attended was that when they normally have nine members, they had tried to put some subcommittees together with, with four members that would not be a quorum and thus would not require notice of a public meeting, so that they would not violate OMA. Unfortunately, with only seven members currently, that four would be a quorum, so they, their subcommittees are a little bit hindered right now, in that they can only move forward with three members.
Okay, so why are we waiting for the councilwoman instead of moving forward?
Madam Mayor, madam mayor, that question's directed to me because I made the motion to table it. I made the motion by request from Councilwoman Lucido. If we, if the council decides we don't want to postpone it, then let's, we'll offer, we'll deal with it. But the motion, I made the motion, I haven't got a second, so if we're going to do this by Robert's rules, then we need a motion, and then we need a second in order to even discuss anything.
I'll second Councilman Curly's motion.
We got a motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Okay, that's it for me.
I had, I had one item, Madam Mayor.
Take that, take that whip and put it away now.
If we could add a closed session to discuss a written legal opinion from our attorney, I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Support.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Okay, so, clue of the agenda with that one item in addition, and now is the hearing, thank you, council. Now is the hearing of the public, the hearing of the public, everyone gets three minutes. Please state your name and residency, or if you're a guest or a business owner, we'd like to know that too, and we welcome you at this time. We ask you to be respectful, where our ages, backgrounds are listening in. The hearing of the public is now open if you even want to like to speak.
Hi, everybody. My name is Adal Toma from two-two-four-two Kelly Road in East Point. I'm going to be fast because I only have three minutes. I'm asking if you could please hurry that three minutes, because it's not enough time to say what you need to say. You got to talk fast, and if you guys could like do it maybe five minutes, six minutes, you know, that'd be great. But the first thing I want to talk about is I want to make a petition to make an ordinance to anybody that's walking around East Point. This is supposed to be a family town with pants down to their ankles. They should be fined. Something should happen, because this is out of control. I walk outside, there's guys walking now with pants down to their ankles. I mean, this is ridiculous. This is a civilized society. I mean, something's got to be done. I mean, if we let this continue, what's next? I mean, just everything down, you know? Number two, the scooters and four-wheelers down the road speeding on Kelly Road is just out of control. I walk every night with my dog, and they're speeding, four-wheelers, no lights, not a cop in sight. I mean, nowhere I'm walking, I'm like, where's the cops? Just speeding, a hundred miles an hour, just boom, boom, boom. Third thing is, we need a sign from eight miles coming, because it says, "Get way to Macomb County." How about put a sign, cross it into East Point to let them know, to let people know you're not in Detroit anymore, this is Macomb County. No dumping dogs, animal abusers turned back. Now, I work at the Macomb County Animal Shelter. We're packed full of black pit bulls. They dump black pit bulls, they just dump them. So how about a sign right there that says, "No dumping dogs, and animal abusers turned back." Maybe, you know, it's a felony to, I don't know if it's a felony to abandon a dog, but, you know, put something, just to, just to turn that away. Fourth thing is the water bill is too high. We have one of the highest water bills in Macomb County, unacceptable. I don't know why you guys haven't fixed it. I talked about this six years ago to Mr. Kleinfeld. When I talked to him about it, he had excuses. Basically, it was shoe fly, shoe fly, shoe. So it's on you guys. I mean, we have, the higher, the water bills are outrageous. Number five, if you look up in the sky every night, or every morning and evening, there's chemtrails. Whatever's flying through there is spraying stuff in the air. You walk outside, you cough, you sneeze, the air is awful. I want someone to contact Sulfur Air Force Base and say, "Why are you spraying stuff in East Point?"
Thirty seconds.
Because this is outrageous, so look, look at all the things. It's not contrails, because contrails don't, don't stay in the sky. These are chemtrails. They're spraying, they're poisoning us. The sixth thing, and the most important thing, is the, the people are vaping like crazy, and thousands are dying from these vapes. How about, well, I'm making a petition, ban vaping. Ban it. It's killing thousands of people, and that leads to more drugs and more drugs and more drugs. I mean, if you have the power to do it, if you have the power to save lives, I say why not do it? I say kick out big tobacco.
Your time is up, sir.
Say time up?
Your time is up, but you get an additional three minutes at the end if you want to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I haven't seen you in a while. Good to see you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Karen Murray, Eastern East Point resident. Sir, you have some very commendable suggestions, but boy, oh, boy, when it comes to change in the law, it is long and it is tedious. Some of the things I would like to touch on tonight is also my number-one passion, as you all know me, is the animals, and unfortunately, this being summertime, this is when people are dumping Easter bunnies left and right, and that is absolutely unacceptable. You know, they should be so lucky if they're taken to a shelter. There's far too many reckless people who just dump them all over the place, by dumpsters, in parks, in the woods, wherever they feel like doing it. And the sad thing is, is that rarely are they caught, because they can be prosecuted under the anti-cruelty statute. It is a misdemeanor unless they die, and then it depends on how many were dumped and how many die, then it turns into felony animal cruelty charges. But it's got to stop, and people are also leaving behind their cats and dogs when they move out. As I was briefly speaking with Director Rohib before the meeting started, there are now four houses on my block that are vacant, and soon there will be a fifth house that will be vacant. And I'm starting to see, you know, cats, and it's like, oh, that's lovely, so the cats were left behind, and unfortunately, our animal control does not deal with cats. A couple of meetings back, I recommended that we desperately need an animal welfare commission here, and all it really takes is, you know, somebody from council to, you know, join in. I'm sure there would be the support with community members that would like to see that to protect our domestic and our wildlife animals. Wildlife, if people don't want them around, it's plain and simple, clean up your property. Don't leave garbage laying around, don't leave food out.
Thirty seconds.
A radio and lights on in the garage, they don't like that, they will leave. Next comment, I will address elderly. How do we help the community so that the elderly don't wind up in these horrific nursing homes left to rot and die? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can get additional three minutes at the end of, closer to the end of the meeting, if you would like. Anyone? I know you will. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Mr. Gaston, if you don't mind, can I get a bottle of water? I'm really, um. Thank you. No one for the hearing of the public? Okay.
Mayor, I had one quick point of order for the city manager. Are we, are we streaming on YouTube?
We are having an issue with YouTube right now, but it is recording on the casters, so it will be uploaded. Rachelle is in the back and attempting to get it back up.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. Okay, the hearing of the public is now closed. If you want to say something near the end, you have, you're welcome to do that. The approval of the minutes, council?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support?
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
I'm staying, I wasn't here for that month of July. Scheduled hearings, we have none, no unfinished business, and we're going to go for reports from our administration, starting with our city manager. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take a moment to really highlight the election, the primary election last week. I know we have some people in the audience now that actually came out and served the community as election inspectors, but it was really an opportunity to see the community come together, really to serve probably the most important part of our democracy in making sure that we have safe and fair elections. We had an incredible amount of community members that came out and volunteered their time to be election inspectors, chairpersons, a lot of time to train and prepare, and some extended hours making sure that our residents were able to get out and vote. We're incredibly thankful for all of the departments that pulled together. Every single department here in the city really latched together, from DPW assisting and putting everything together on an incredibly hot day, to our finance and building department lending us some staff to help put everything together. We had even public safety that, you know, ensured all of our poles and precincts were incredibly safe, even here back at City Hall. We had someone stop in late at night just to make sure everything was safe. So it was really an opportunity to see how incredible the residents here in, in East Point are, as well as the staff and the departments really pull together to, to pull off a safe and transparent election for the residents here in East Point. So I am appreciative of everyone that worked the election and all of the staff that are here that really did an incredible job, especially the first two days of the election, August first and August second, the staff that worked here, out of those forty-eight hours, worked thirty-eight of those hours. So a lot of times, it's behind-the-scenes things that you don't see, but there are people here that are really putting their best foot forward and bringing their best to East Point day in and day out, and we're incredibly appreciative of them. Again, we are so thankful for the inspectors as well at all of the precincts, and we are hiring and wanting to touch base and bring those inspectors and chairpersons back for the November election, so we're incredibly hopeful that they're interested in coming back to serve the community. And with that, Mayor, if there are any questions that Mayor or Council may have, I can absolutely answer those.
Questions for our city manager? Saying none, going to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening, Mr. Blum.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I do have one topic tonight. The water sewer bond issue was approved by Treasury yesterday, yeah, yesterday, think about that, and the documents have been signed, so we're moving forward. The bond issue will be closed at the end of August, and then we can get moving on the actual projects. That's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Blum? Saying none, going to our city attorney, Ms. Aubrey. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Just a couple of things. Medical marijuana update. One of the parties who was deemed to have their application not in compliance with the buffer requirements, they have opted to appeal that case and have that appeal heard before the city's hearing officer. That appeal is going to take place this Thursday at one-thirty. I believe city administration is going to have it set up here in the council chambers so members of the public can watch that on the screens. The party opted to, rather than be in person, opted to have that done via Zoom, so the hearing officer, myself, and the app, or the appellate will be appearing via Zoom, but members of the public will be able to watch that appeal process from here in the city council chambers. Also, the medical marijuana committee has scheduled its next meeting, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, beginning at two o'clock. Notices will go out to all of the applicants who either have not had their applications denied for incompleteness or are not otherwise on appeal, so those written notices will go to all the parties. I know some of the parties or the representatives do watch the city council meetings, so if they are watching this evening, that next meeting is going to be set for next Wednesday, and you will receive written notice of that. Our office is working on a couple of ordinances right now, Madam Mayor. Those will be before the council in September, so they're not complete yet, but they will be on the agenda before September. And the council's also in receipt of our monthly status report. I know I've acknowledged the building department during past report sections, but our status report compared to last year at this time, I believe it was something like seventeen, eighteen pages, and this one is much shorter. It was six pages, so it doesn't take me as long to do either, so I'm very thankful to the building department for that. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor. I have to answer some questions.
Any questions by council tonight? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Aubrey. We're going to go into new business for the approval for the two thousand and twenty-two MML convention from October nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Council, you have any opinions or things you want to say on this?
No, Madam Mayor, but I'll move that we approve the, for the mayor and the council to attend the two thousand and twenty-two MML convention from October nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. I support that.
And I assume we're just saying, if you want to go. We're not saying everybody is going, right? We're just allowing it if you want to go?
If you want to go. Make that part of my motion.
Motion, are you down, councilman?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Item B, Universal Avenue Reconstruction, council. Conversation on this?
Mayor, I'll, motion, we approve the reconstruction of Universal Avenue from Tofer Drive to Lincoln Avenue. By Italian Construction for the unit pricing stated in its bid dated March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, for an estimated cost of sixty thousand dollars plus ten percent or six thousand dollar contingency.
I support that.
Motion and support. That's that area near the church, correct? That they've been, they've been asking for that for a while, so I'm glad that it's being done. Motion and support?
Can I confirm one more? It is just concrete, right? We're, we're just getting rid of it, just putting just concrete down, right? Okay. Thank you.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. The two thousand and twenty-two tax reverted properties, I know we just got done talking about it vaguely, so let's get right into it, starting with our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Holman. Can you let us know what was the issue about this?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. So there was some conversation just previously about the, the surplus. Unfortunately, this new federal court, it was just the hearing, so there's been no written opinion yet, which will be expected December or January. However, the court was very harsh on cities and the counties, and was not following, according to the County Treasurer's House Counsel, was not following other Supreme Court cases. They were focused on the right of refusal, which is the man, means by which the city would be able to buy the properties prior to public auction. They had issues with that. They were focused on a public purpose requirement, as well as the current law, which states that proceeds should go back to the county. And if I use the example, that was before, if we buy a property for five thousand and put ninety in, ninety into it, and it sells for a hundred, so it's ninety-five selling for a hundred, if, that would be, the surplus would be five thousand. This court, based on the Macomb County Treasurer's legal counsel, this court is focusing on the fair market value, thereby it could even be higher. So not just the proceeds, because the County Treasurer at this point is going to put any, any sales that they have where there's a surplus, they're going to put that into an escrow account. But cities, under this right of refusal, may, it hasn't been decided, may be responsible for even more than just the surplus, so it wouldn't even be a matter of, of putting any proceeds into an escrow, they may be responsible for more than that. Again, this is something that, that the County Treasurer felt it was necessary to warn all the municipalities or relay this to municipalities. I, I strongly, this is a hard one for me, because I truly believe that municipalities should have the opportunity, as many of us on the phone call discussed. Macomb County and the municipalities do this for blight removal, so many of these are not in good condition, and then also to avoid speculators and landlords that just flip what they want. So this is, this is a tough pill for me to swallow. So for me to even be recommending this is, I have, I have concerns about the liability that would be on the city. I did ask the question that it does not make a difference if the municipality is partnering with nonprofits, including national nonprofits that do. with nonprofits, including national nonprofits that do housing. There's still, the court actually mentioned counties and cities being in collusion, which was unfortunate, because as many of us who have worked in tax foreclosure, people who don't pay their taxes, you got three years, you know. And so this is, this is a shame. So we're hoping against hope, but it's a concern. Administration is concerned about what the liability would be.
Okay.
I had a question. Ms. Walton, you suggested we purchase the five properties as your recommendation.
So this was prior to the call with the, with the county and the Department of Treasury?
I mean, this is the first, I'm hearing any of this right at this moment. I don't know, in the past, we've always purchased the homes. I mean, would, this would apply, the idea you're discussing, Ms. Holman, would apply to, could apply to previous years also then, right?
It does not appear that this court is focused on retroactivity. The state legislature actually, legislature actually came up with a two-year requirement on retroactivity. Surprisingly, Oakland County actually decided to settle the now infamous Raffaelli case and agreed for it to be retroactive all the way back to 2009, not just the two years, but way back, which is very disconcerting. So this, this court is really just focused on the, on the right of refusal, and there was no discussion at all of retroactivity.
So you said the liability is we will have to do a surplus. Explain that a little bit more.
This court actually, unlike the other court where the Oakland County Treasurer was required to give the surplus to the former owner who was not paying taxes, this court appears to be leaning beyond that to fair market value. So if we bought it for five, put in ninety, have it cost at 95, sell it for 100, but it's really worth fair market value, just determined to be 130, then we're responsible for the 35,000, not just the surplus.
Going back to what Councilman DeMonico said, this will apply to the past houses that we bought too, correct?
No, this should not. This court does not appear to be leaning, retroactively looking backwards, they're just looking at the current sales and moving forward.
Even if we bought these houses back and tried to sell it back to the owner, because a lot of people are losing their houses due to financial hardship, is that a possibility? We can sell it back to them and offer them first right of refusal? And then if we, if they do not wanna buy it, go back to our old ways where we allow our school district and the people that work for the city to have first right?
Actually-
That work or no?
Mayor, state law does not allow any, any former owners to redeem the properties. They lose, they completely lose the right to the property, so this is just focused on proceeds, but state law does not allow former owners to, to buy back properties.
We can't sell them the properties back, is what you're saying? Anyone else?
Mayor? Sure. I think, council, this is, I mean, basically the same discussion we've had kind of over the last year or two about these properties. We've decided to go forward in the last couple of years, and then we'd had the tax reversion committee put a whole tax foreclosure policy, which I know we spent a lot of time, well, I shouldn't say we as in I, I wasn't on the committee, but Mayor Proton was, and Mr. Kleinfeld, when he was on council. We put a whole policy together that we'd buy these properties so that we can improve the neighborhood and not just, you know, let them go to auction and hopefully somebody purchases them. Because before, we'd sell them all to one developer, then couple the houses, depending on which developer, they'd come back into foreclosure just like three years later again. So we decided we'd purchase them, improve them, and then try to sell them on the market, and that's, I'd like to continue doing that.
We got a risk of, you know, paying more. I like to go back to the old ways, since things changed, the laws changed, and we'd be coming out with more money. People buy it as is. People were buying it as is in the past. I know it's the new city management, but I know the director of finance, you might know about this, in the past, when we bought these tax reverter properties, we didn't fix them up. That was something that we just started doing in the last two years. But when we sold them as is, we were getting them sold, correct?
Correct. That, the tax reversion committee that Councilman DeMonico was speaking to, that's what changed how we handled these going forward. But yeah, we used to sell them as is, and whoever bought them was expected to fix them up, but it took code enforcement to make that happen. Giving, giving a quick example, this might be a little more easy to understand. So take the first one on the list. It's, would cost us $9,133.84. Even if we sold it to Habitat for $9,133.84 and had no profit, no proceeds, but it was determined that house was worth $80,000, the city would have to cough up $70,000 to the previous owner who never paid their taxes, under the, potentially, under the way this court's leaning. So while we would net zero, we would actually lose 70,000 if this court, expected court ruling comes through. And that's, that's the danger of buying them this year, that we could be on the hook for a significant amount of money to previous owners.
We can't put a clause in there if someone buys it that they take on that responsibility, that liability. If Habitat buys a house for $9,000, they take on a responsibility of paying that surplus. We can't put that in.
I don't know that anybody would agree to it, but I mean, you could put anything in a contract.
Yeah, put it in a contract, because the courts haven't made a decision yet.
They have not.
$80,000 for five properties, is that, it's not that deal. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions, off the subject of if we go ahead of this crazy thing and the city gets stuck for hundreds of thousands of dollars because we wanna buy these homes. But here's, off, off the record, and I don't know who's gonna answer this, the house on Charles R., notice to vacate, dog inside. I need, having, I, I need to find out, first of all, how did you find out that there's a dog inside? Is that dog still there? And who feeds it? Who gives it water? And if it's still there, why?
When we first got the list, we had our code enforcement building official staff go out and check the properties. That one has been in the code enforcement system. They did have issues with steps, there was a notice to vacate, all completely unrelated to the taxes. There were people there, and at the time they went, the people were not there, but the dog was inside. We had another one that we went to that the owner, it was 100% PRE, owner occupant, said he was aware that it was tax foreclosure and he would be leaving in August because of the tax foreclosure. Of course, we didn't pursue any, any additional information.
So as far as we know, the dog is still there. Is that correct?
We, it was being cared for, believe me, I would, I would know.
It is being cared for?
Yes.
It's being fed and watered and?
There were, yes, there were people in cars, yes.
Okay. All right.
I'm number one with that.
Okay, the other house on Topher, city padlocked last year, 2021, dangerous building.
So this-
How dangerous is the building that, that some of us are advocating to buy?
So actually, our building official and electrical inspector have been inside. This property has actually been in the tax foreclosure process for five years, but was not actually foreclosed upon due to the pandemic. Last year, about this time, there were frequent incidents of trespass and people there doing drugs, so the city actually went out and put padlocks on the doors. It is not in the best condition, it's probably not one of the worst that we've seen, but it, it is, it is familiar to the dangerous building process.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, my expectation is that with not having been able to purchase properties for the past couple of years, that there are a lot of property management companies with money to spend that are gonna be buying these, probably for even more than they're listed. So it will be incumbent on, on the city and code enforcement to ensure that permits are obtained. Again, this would be a perfect opportunity if we had point-of-sale inspections when they purchased it, that, that the building official actually had an opportunity to get in and see what needs to be done, but all we can do is stay on top of them and, you know, unless there's reason to get inside.
At this point, as of tonight, how many reverted properties do we have that's not been sold yet?
At this point, we only have one that's not been spoken for. We have, the others have been either approved for Habitat for Humanity or had been in the CMS program, so right now they're on hold with the litigation. So we only have one that, that was a latecomer that we have not done anything with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Councilman Baker?
No, I, well, I pretty much stated my opinion earlier. I'm not willing to put the city at risk. I mean, it's just too much unknown, and to get a property for a little bit of money but potentially have to pay out more than what you purchased the property for, that's not good business. I wouldn't be in favor of it at this moment, especially with no decision by the courts.
Doesn't this mean nobody's gonna buy any of these properties ever then? If this is the case? I don't know. To me, this is just, we're improving the community, not, there's no way the courts are gonna come in and be like, oh, you owe 80 grand each property, every single city that's ever done this. I mean, it'd be millions and millions overnight that all of a sudden, every single city in the whole state would owe. I do not, I mean, that seems like a ridiculous court decision.
Councilmember, that is absolutely, you are absolutely correct. It is bizarre, the county legal counsel, and I believe they even had outside counsel on the phone call, but, but they were just literally dumbfounded. For some reason, these judges don't understand, again, I've worked in tax foreclosure, you've had three years, and if there's hardships, there are payment plans. So to just sort of ignore it, and we actually had, we've had people, we just ignore it and think it's gonna go away, and, and it is, it is gonna be a real shock, and probably we'll have to, you know, depending on the ruling, may change to state law again. But absolutely agree, councilmember, that this is, this is a real shame.
The other thing, this case only relates to right of first refusal for the city. So when these go for auction, if they sold at auction for $9,133, it's okay. In fact, we, the city, could go bid on these things at the county auction, as long as we don't get them through the right of first refusal. That's the, let's say, sticking point with the court.
In this new case?
Correct. And, and the county, Macomb County Treasurer's office will be putting any surplus, so if it's 9,000 and they sell it for 12,000, they'll be putting that into escrow. They anticipate, should the court rule, as we, as they anticipate, they will be immediately taking it up on appeal, they are willing, and several, of course, this is now gonna impact all the counties in Michigan, they're talking about the US Supreme Court if they have to.
When's the county auction expected to be roughly?
It's the second week in August. I'm sorry.
Next week?
It's, sorry, it's the last week in August.
And you said, Mr. Blum, if we don't, if we go to the auction ourselves and buy it as a group, if we kind of find a way to get away from this, the right of, first right of refusal? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Even though it's gonna be, it's gonna be higher at the auction, I know that for sure. I've been to one of those auctions.
It absolutely will be.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna sell for 80,000, those people already to spend-
Yeah, and they're gonna auction them off individually, so-
Half a million dollars for these houses.
If council wanted to set a price limit on each one of these properties, we could have somebody go and bid on them and see if we can get them. That would be one way to avoid the court, the anticipated court ruling.
Well, usually at the auctions, they ask people, do they wanna buy them in bulk first?
They are not gonna do it that way this year.
They're not gonna do it this way this year?
They're gonna do individual parcels, not bulk purchases.
Oh, they are? Well, let's try it that, just try it a new way, since everything's new. But I agree with, you know, I, I agree with both of you all saying, because it's a new ruling and we're not used to doing it, so since all this is new, maybe we should, what do you all wanna do? Do you wanna, wanna try to go to the auction and buy them, so we can get around the surplus?
I, I just-
What do you think?
Mr. Blum, I need a, I had thought you said earlier that if somebody bid $9,133, that would be it, but if we bid $9,133 and fix it up, it would be the same thing that the court is trying to put through. I mean, but are you now saying that if we went to the auction and bid $9,000, that's the end of it?
Correct, because that, that would not be part of the right of first refusal, which is the first step in the county foreclosure. They offer it to the communities first at cost, basically, and that's what the court has the issue with. If it goes to a public auction and the city were to bid on it and win the auction, there's no problem.
I think we should try that. And then just put a number of how much we wanna stand on it.
May I ask one more question before, to Mr. Aubrey?
Oh, no, I wasn't, I was just discussing, yeah, please.
You agree with what Ms. Walton and Ms. Holman are saying?
Councilmember DeMonico, I do, because what it does is it guarantees a very low risk to the city. If, and the city still has the option to purchase these properties at the auction, as Mr. Blum had stated, it's a two-step process. The problem that the courts are having right now is this right of first refusal that is afforded to the municipalities, and what I've gathered is the courts are looking at that as some type of unfair advantage to the municipalities, even though that's not how most city administrations look at it. They look at it as they're doing this so they benefit the communities as opposed to trying to make a profit. So if the council decides not to purchase these properties through, through right of first refusal, and simply waits to see, okay, what is the auction going to be like, and then bid on them, and who knows, that might actually work to the city's favor, because the price may continue to go, go, go up, and even though the city may not end up with the property, the price will be higher, and that hopefully would go to somebody who's gonna be more responsible. So by going that route, it minimizes the risk, the financial risk to the city.
So Mayor, I think, are you suggesting we motion to purchase, well, I guess, just the five homes then, I think we'd go with, and not the vacant lots? Try to purchase them for the price listed in the packet here at the county auction?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think I, I wanna try to do it at the auction.
So if I can jump in, that, that's gonna be the start of, of, of the auction number, so we wouldn't have to know the cap on each one of those properties, that the council would be willing to spend on each one of the properties. But so, like, the first one will start at 9,133 minimum, so we'd have to know the maximum that council would be willing to pay for each one of those properties.
Don't we have a real estate agent on, on our team?
We do not.
Because I don't wanna do a figure, and it's worth, it wouldn't make sense.
Can we just do a minimum and maximum of the exact amount in the packet? Just if someone outbids us, then I guess.
Because we haven't even, council hasn't even seen the properties. We don't even know how they look, so, so, you know what I'm saying? We don't know if the roof is burnt down, and what are you talking about? You know, it's like, let, we don't have any pictures in here, and for us to just get it today, tonight, is what I'm saying.
Well, and if we're going this route, we could table the next, meet it next week.
We have enough time for?
Yes, the auction is not till the end of the month, so if we wanted to add this on the agenda and add additional information to the packets for you, we can make the decision next week.
Okay, and I guess that gives us some time, council. If some of council members wanna drive past these properties and look at them, that'll work?
Well, excuse me, I drove by the Topher house today-
Okay.
-because we said dangerous building. I don't have the key to get in. So the house looks like a lot of other houses in our city. So driving by and not being able to go in is a waste of time.
So I do have photos. I'm happy to share those with you as soon as tomorrow. Like I said, we did send the code enforcement inspectors, and so they were able to take exterior shots, including in some cases, they did get in the backyard where there was nobody there. So I'm happy to share that. Reviewing the records, our building official did review the photos and records and did himself check out the properties. And he said, none of them are in such a condition as to need demolition. He said, the Topher property is gonna need a little extra love. That would be something such as a Habitat that has the extra resources to put into a property. But otherwise, he thought that the rest of them were relatively stable. Actually, more on the good side than the bad.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please share those photos, and I'm gonna still drive past them, because that's what I wanna do. And council has that option, as well as the members of the city, because that's where our tax money, your tax money is going to. So, you wanna, you wanna motion?
Yeah, as I say, Mayor, I'll motion we table to the next meeting, the 2022 tax revenue properties topic.
I'll support that.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yeah, I'll vote yes to talk about it again next week. Doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for it, though, but I'll say yes tonight.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Item D, industrial resolution number twenty-two dash one-nine-four-six, a resolution approving MDOT contract number twenty-two dash five-three-one-eight for the replacement of water main underneath I-94 and nine-mile road and ten-mile road serving as emergency connections with the City of St. Clair Shores Council.
Madam Mayor, I move that we, dot resolution number twenty-two dash one-nine-four-six approving MDOT contract number twenty-two dash five-three-one-eight, and authorizing the street administrator to execute contract on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Motion to support, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Item E, the appointment to downtown development authority from our city manager appointment with approval of council, city manager Ms. Walton.
I'll move we appoint Rob Davis to the downtown development authority with the term to expire September first, 2025.
I'll support that.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Item F is the appointment to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I would move to appoint Brian Austin Young to the Arts and Culture Diversity Commission with a term to expire ten fifteen twenty-three.
I'll support it.
Motion to support, please call.
Mayor, I had one quick question before we. Um, I see that if we go forward with all three of these appointments, we'd be removing the current chair, Mathias Krenzer, from the commission. I'd rather not see that happen. I don't know if that was the intention, but I'd like to see him stay on the commission if possible.
So you're saying when we appoint these three people, he'll be removed?
Right, there's two, like, his term is up for reappointment. Mr. Langston Moore's is, and then there's a vacancy.
Okay, when Mr. Moore's appointment is vacant, he can try to reapply the young man that you're talking about?
Well, we have three on here, I'm saying. Those three would, like, replace Langston's position also.
That's fine. So we have motion and.
So you're saying, okay.
That's fine. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Item G, did you wanna finish your counseling?
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we.
Thank you.
Appoint Wanda Moody to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with the term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-five.
Support. Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Item H, going to the next page, is for Derek Hudson Sr. with the term to expire October fifteenth, 2025, for his appointment to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. A motion to put him on the commission as an appointment? Can I get support on that?
I'll support it.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Welcome to the family. Appointment to the Beautification Commission. We are adding Ms. Sullivan to fill the vacancy with a term to expire October fifteenth, 2023.
Madam Mayor, I would move to appoint Rachel Sullivan to the Beautification Commission with a term to expire ten fifteen twenty-three.
I'll support that.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
The next appointment is for the appointment of Bishop Eric Lloyd with the term to expire six thirty, 2025, for the Board of Ethics.
I would be happy to make that motion, but there is something that was brought to our attention via email. In the Ethics Ordinance, section two dash one oh three, I believe it was, or is, it states that on the applications that the applicant is supposed to provide the date of birth. One of our residents pointed that out via email. And I did have some discussion, and I did talk with our city attorney, and I think that that requirement should be removed, because it takes away the option of having age discrimination. And I know that on, for any other commissioner board, that it's not required. So, Mr. Albright, I don't know if you have any clarity that you wanna add to that, but I think that we should.
Has it been an issue on any other appointments, other than the Board of Ethics?
No, this is the first that I've ever heard. I mean, that someone has pointed that out. It is written in the ordinance, but I think that ordinance should be, that should be amended to remove that requirement. And we have never used it for any other appointment on the Board of Ethics. So this is the first time that it's come to our attention. So any other appointment that we had to the Board of Ethics, no one has filled out or included their date of birth as part of their application. And I think we should continue with the form that we have at hand. I don't think that that information is necessary. I think it should be removed, because I think, I think it can be very controversial.
Were you on the, because you were, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no, you're fine.
Weren't you on the Board of Ethics?
I was.
Did you put your birthday, birthday on it?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't, there was no space on the form for it, on the application. So, and I just kinda wanted to get some clarity from Mr. Albright, if there's, you know, has our legal mind to share his thoughts.
It, it's not a requirement in any of the other boards and commissions that I'm aware of, and this issue could be easily remedied by simply the council giving the instruction to remove that language in the ordinance and bring it before the council for a first reading and a second reading.
I think that's, yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't we even be under age discrimination if we require people to put their age on any application?
I don't, I don't foresee any, any lawsuits in this regard, but I think.
In this particular regard.
Right, but.
But I'm just saying, historically.
For consistency.
Asking for a person's age could be construed as age discrimination.
Yeah, for consistency and uniformity, I would recommend that that requirement be removed from the, from the ethics ordinance requirements.
Okay, so.
You want a consensus, or you want a motion?
Oh, I, I think I.
You can do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I move that we appoint Bishop Lloyd to the Board of Ethics. I'm sorry, I lost my page of when that term is supposed to expire. I apologize for that.
June thirty, 2025?
Thank you, June thirtieth, 2025, thank you.
That was a motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I support it. Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item in payroll and bills, council?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we pay the payment of the bills in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'll support that.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. We're gonna do the hearing of the public. It's now open, the second hearing of the public is now open. You have three minutes. I usually start the time, once you say your name and residency, to get, give you more time.
Ready?
Give me one second, and I'll let you know. Okay.
Cindy Federley, East Point resident. I have a question about the purchase of these homes, and I know you can't answer me right now, but what happens to the profit if we purchase them at auction? Does the city get to benefit with the profit from the sales? And that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Thank you, good question. Anyone else would like to have anything to say at this time?
Hello, Hidal Tomma, two-two-four-two, O'Kelly Road, East Point. One more thing that I wanted to say is on your website, when you, when you put in the city council, it leads you to the Facebook page. The Facebook page is old, it hasn't been updated until, or since 2021. Then it takes you to a Zoom. When I hit that Zoom link, the Zoom didn't do anything. It says, waiting for the party to let you in. So those two things need to be fixed on the website. Second thing is, on a personal note, please, East Point, stop voting for the Republican mafia and the Democrat mafia. These are two gangs, just like the Bloods and Crips. You got the Bloods here, the Crips here, the Republicans here, and the Democrats here. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. So please, East Point, stop being insane. The third thing is, I petition, I don't even know if I'm saying it right, but I'm just gonna stay with this word. I petition the state senator to come to East Point's city council meeting and explain, explain how are we gonna get our money back from the oil companies ripping us off? You know, we have to go put gas in the car. Most of us don't have a lot, a lot of spending money, and we're just going all the gas and bills. I want him to answer us, how are we gonna get our money back? Because they just made a killing off of us. The second thing is, to run for school board or any other board, you have to have enough petitions. For the school board in particular, or you pay a hundred dollar fine. Well, what if you don't have a hundred dollars laying around, spending money? You know, poor people shouldn't be, you know, discriminated upon because they don't have a hundred dollars. You know, so I petition the city council to make some kind of a waiver for those who can't afford to pay for it. I mean, we don't need anymore, you know, Klein, Phillips, Lucidos, attorneys, politicians, running for office. What we need is fast food workers, janitors, cashiers, bricklayers, normal people who make normal money, making decisions for normal people. Not people that know legal jargon, and I know this, and I know this wording, and I know, no. We just need normal people. The last thing is, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. What East Point really needs is an animal commission. It could be like the Beautification Commission, or any other commission, just people that can, you know, advocate for animals, because animals have no voice. If we don't be their voice, no one's gonna do it. The last thing is.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Did you say, my time's up?
No, thirty seconds.
Okay. Okay, now, I went to Sandusky, Ohio, and I looked at their city council, how they do things. And when, when, when people come up with a petition or ask questions, the city council that day answered all their petitions, whether it was yes or no, or voted on it. They did it all that day. I notice this council doesn't, doesn't work that way. I don't know if that's the law here, or if that's the ordinance here, but in Sandusky, Ohio, they answer.
Your, your time is up, sir. And when we answer our questions, we usually do it at the time of mayor and council report. And if we don't have the answers for you, we jot down the questions, just like Ms. Federley. Federley, I'm sorry, I don't wanna get your last name wrong. Like the answer to the question she just asked, we wanna make sure that we research it, and we give her the right information. And we also ask you all to leave your name and number, so we can get back to you, so that we can give you the proper information, and not just talk about things that we don't know what we're talking about. So we're the type of council that we don't give you information unless we are, we do the research and do the background. So that's how we do things here in East Point. So, and some of the council are well-informed, and we can answer you right away. And also, our administration and our directors. That's why we have a director of public safety here, we have our director of public works here. We have all our directors come to our council meetings. And you don't have a lot of directors that come to council meetings, like the city of East Point. They don't even show up. So if you have questions for those departments, they're not only here for a council, they're actually here also after the meeting to give you additional information, and you can talk one-on-one. So that's a plus, because they're actually not, they're off work, and they're here to serve you without getting paid. So the hearing of the public is still open, anyone? Oh, we have one more person, of course. We don't have anyone else. Anyone else would like to speak? I know you, I'm now gonna close it, because I know you gotta say your last remarks, but I wanna make sure everybody else, anyone else have to speak at this time? Okay, you're up now. Okay.
Karen Murray, agent, East Point resident. I about lost my mind when Councilman Curly said the dog was left in that house. So I am asking our city attorney, our animal control, and our public safety director to please work together. That dog needs to be removed from the house. Animal control needs to be at that house every day, checking on that dog. When there was the foreclosure crisis back in 2008, people were leaving their animals behind in the houses with no one to check on them. And those poor dogs died horrible deaths. They were left in houses with no air conditioning on, in sweltering heat and humidity, no water. They basically died a horrific death. That's, that's not right. As the gentleman who spoke before me, we are the voice for the animals. And I'm happy to hear that there is another resident, other than myself, that finds the urgent need for our city to have an animal welfare commission, that we would be working closely with animal control. But we need the support of at least one council member. And if our city attorney wasn't up to his eyeballs in a massive case overload, I would be, yes, pun intended, hounding you relentlessly to join on the commission. We need this, we desperately need this. And, you know, also with senior citizens, sadly, not everybody has loving family members. You know, there was mention earlier about tax foreclosures and payment arrangements, and sometimes people just ignore it, hoping it goes away. But there are also unscrupulous family members who, in my opinion, a durable power of attorney is nothing more than a license to steal. That should be a family decision, and not one family member manipulating a vulnerable adult parent into handing over all that power and control. Those are the types of people that. Those are the types of people that they fail to pay the taxes, and they cause.
Twenty seconds.
That parent to lose the house. So again, just quickly circling back on the elderly, I'd really like to see how we can all come together as a community to help our elderly residents so that they're not being neglected and abused, and that they're not.
Your time is up now.
Shumped into nursing homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, the hearing of the public is now closed. Before we go into our closed session, I'm going to do mayor council reports, and then we go into our closed session, and then we're going to come back out and do an adjournment. Uh, you all are welcome to wait until we come out. If not, God bless you for coming out. It's good to see you all, having seen you all, like I said, it's been over a month. Um, we're going to start our mayor council reports, starting with Councilman Baker.
Well, uh, just to those that helped work, um, during the election, I got to see some of that hard work, because I did go out and do my civic duty and vote. I didn't do it early like Councilman DeMonico did, and he told me about. But, uh, just thank you to those, and to all of, uh, City Hall who worked to make it possible and to go through. I know you guys were here putting in late hours. And that's pretty much all that I have. There was a gentleman here at our last meeting who asked me about my word of the day, because I didn't do one. I had a very simple one today, but I don't see him here, and the word was just placid. It's serenely free of interruption and disturbance. If he's watching, that was for him.
Councilman Curly? Thank you. I'm Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, just a congratulations out to Veronica Kleinfeld for, uh, getting through the primary, and Sarah Lucido for getting through the county, county commission election. Just want to, if I may, Madam Mayor, just talk a little bit about the two cats that we have. Last September, these two cats start coming around to our front porch. One was just seven months old at the time, and we fed them every day. And it got into middle of October, and wow, it started to get cold, and I looked at Carol, and Carol looked at me, and I said, "What do you think?" She says, "Let's do it." So we, we picked up both cats, and went right to the veterinarian, and, uh, did what we had to do to get them fixed up, and they have been the delight of Carol and I. I can't tell you, fuck, one of them runs around and jumps up. In fact, he jumps around so much, he has knocked down two television sets and crushed them. Yeah. The other one sleeps a lot, but as soon as I, as soon as I get on a chair, he, he gets up and jumps up on my lap and goes asleep. But, uh, so if you guys got an opportunity to do that, you know, I know you, different circumstances, you've got kids, or you got, or you got a couple, two or three dogs, maybe you have a couple cats, but if the cat starts coming up and, and you're starting to feed it, if you don't want to bring it in, take it to the shelter, because I can tell you, you don't know something bigger than that cat's going to get them, and they're going to kill that animal. So it's no big deal for you to pick up the cat, take it to the, the proper place, and they'll get a life with somebody else. Other than that, um, it was a tough meeting tonight, but like any other meeting, when we, when we get done, we're done. And, uh, it, it came out okay. So God bless everybody, and, uh, see you next Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I guess first, uh, I don't know, I'm not very encouraged right now. I don't know who would want to join a commission in the city right now. I don't know. We've got this Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, where they're trying, you know, it's a bunch of folks just volunteering their time, not getting paid, and then there's all kinds of things going on between city council here, city administration, where they try to do a mural, they get voted down, they volunteer their time to do this flowerbed out front, and then their flowers are ripped out. The, these people are just trying to spend their time and volunteer for the city and make it a better place, and we just have all these things making it harder for them to just volunteer their time. So I don't, I don't know who would want to join a commission right now, frankly. I don't know. I'm, I'm, uh, not very encouraged. So, but, uh, on a brighter note, um, congrats to everyone for putting the election together. Again, as Ms. Walton said, uh, she thanked a very long list. Thank you for thanking everybody. You know, I see, uh, Mr. Paolucci in the DPW, Mr. Rohib, Public Safety out in the audience right now. Thank you, guys, for smooth election. As was said before, obviously, we know that, you know, there's been dangerous times, and we know it's long hours to get all the equipment everywhere it needs to be. Thanks to the clerk's office, Elections Office, you know, they work many, many hours, and all the people in the community that work the polls, it's a very long day. So thanks, thanks, everyone. Yeah, I want to just congratulate a couple people, because we've got a decent amount of winners here from East Point. As Councilman Curly said, Ms. Lucido for the Democratic nominee for County Commission, and Ms. Kleinfeld for the State Senate, but also Ms. Kimberley Edwards for State House. I don't know if there's ever been a time where potentially, uh, our county commissioner, state house member, and state senator could all be from East Point. So I guess we know who to go to if we need something done at the county or Lansing, then if, you know, uh, if they win in November. And also, uh, the rare event, Rockin' Summer Night, changed from Sizzling Summer Night, was a good time, ton of people out there, the weather was like perfect, it definitely wasn't like, I think it was the very next day, a huge, huge downpour. So they picked the right date for that, I guess Election Day is a good day, and, um, I had a good time. And then also just one other thing, um, obviously, everybody knows 911 to call for public safety emergency. There's now 988, if you haven't heard about it yet, uh, for mental health emergencies. Call, call that instead of 911, you know, like suicide, just anything like that. If someone, you know someone, they can call 988 then, and they'll get a, you know, professional social worker to help them out, and that'll help Mr. Rohib out, so they can focus on, 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 on other things. So just keep that in mind, 988. It's now the, now is it the National Suicide, um, Line? It's 988 instead of a long 800 number now. Uh, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Again, thank you all for, uh, coming out. I want to thank the Elections Department, uh, everyone that made it successful, and I also definitely want to give a big, uh, we could do shout-outs, I, I think we could do shout-outs out here, even though it's not a radio station. A big shout-out to our city manager and our assistant city manager for, uh, making the elections, this is their first election, and they did amazing. We don't know all what went behind the scenes, but whatever went behind the scenes, you will never know, because you did an excellent job. Um, I also want to thank Mr. Levin, um, since he's been in, in office, he has allowed our city to get many grants, uh, that has helped us tremendously. And even though he's not, um, in office anymore, we don't want to forget the people that made things happen when they are, that was in office. These are good leaders, we need to remember the leadership that we have, and make sure that we thank him, um, for the things that he has done for the city of East Point. Um, I was gone to Harvard University in Massachusetts in Cambridge for three weeks. Um, it felt like forever, I did so much reading, I'm very tired. But, um, going there, I, I've learned a lot, and I saw a lot of things. I was there with city managers from all over, uh, congressmen from, um, out the country, he is a congressman from out the country, uh, executives, uh, so many different people behind the scenes to make cities and government move. And we talked a lot about economics, policy, uh, we talked about education, and a major topic that we talked about was race. And it was a big eye-opener for a lot of people who wasn't of color that were there in, in Harvard, and it was, and they was able to talk to people like myself and other leaders that were people of color. So they were very open, and they were very sad because of how our country is and the things that they needed to change as Caucasians. And so they wanted to do a lot, they listened. And so, at Harvard University, it's about my, a mindset of opening your mind to move things forward. And, um, it was a lot of heartache there, and it was a lot of, you know, people was able to move aside their thoughts of how they was brought up. They were, uh, to move aside the things that, stereotypes and things that they saw, and they opened up their mind and listened. Um, it was a young lady there that talked about how she had to teach her African-American son about certain things, about how to put his hands on a steering wheel, and it was a Caucasian lady said, "I didn't have to teach my son those things." And so it was a, it was a mindset to put leaders in a space of people with different backgrounds, cultures, so they can open their mind and make this world a better place. And so the first thing you have to do is start listening to people that do not look like you. Start listening and educating yourself, and be around people that have different experiences than you, so you can learn why they act the way they act, why they move the way they move, and why they think the way they think. And if you don't open your mindset, then you're stuck, and I feel sorry for you, because we will never change the city or this world if you don't listen. And so, um, it was very, uh, amazing to be there, and you know your mayor spoke, and it was a lot of professors that wanted to talk to me afterwards, and it's a lot of people that I connected with, because I tell the truth, and people want to hear the truth, and if we don't talk about our truth, we'll be stuck. And so I want to say, um, I had a great time. I, I went to Harvard this year, and then I also spoke at Princeton earlier this year with other mayors around the country. So your mayor is setting our, uh, city on the map, and letting people know what we're doing, how we're doing it, and how we're moving. So I'm very proud of that. Also want to thank all the people that put aside their time to be on these commissions, we appreciate that. Like, um, some of what Councilman DeMonico said, we thank you for, for the time that you put in it, and we need more people like you. And sometimes it's a time for change. And if you own these commissions, we want you to represent the city of East Point with respect and integrity. And if you're going to do, be a part of these commissions, we want you to do that. And if you can't do that, we ask you not to even apply. So I want to thank those for, the people that ran as well, in addition, uh, to those that won, and, um, to those like myself and others, um, in the city of East Point, who never ran. Like your mayor was the first African-American that ran for state senator in this, in the 14th district. And I am proud of myself, because I didn't get the opportunities that everybody who don't look like me got. And when you don't get those opportunities, it's hard to make a difference. But someone has to step up and make the move to encourage other people to do it. And so for like Kimberly Edwards, Robert Roscoe, also Rhonda Powell, and there was another young lady, um, I think Ms. Hawada, I believe if she's Muslim or not, I don't want to get it wrong, but people of color and people of backgrounds in this, in the county of McComb are moving forward, and that's winning to me. We have a county that no one has ever stepped up of color, and we are making those moves, so that's victory in itself. Victory is getting in the race, and that's what I learned at Harvard. Get in the race, stay in the race, and fight, because people are watching you, and you're encouraging other people. That's winning. So I'm going to close it out, and we're going to go to closed session. Council?
Mayor, I'll motion we go into closed session to review a written legal opinion by your attorney.
Support.
Motion and support to go into closed session. Call the row.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Going into closed session, you're welcome to stay until we get out, it shouldn't be that long, and if you can't stay, God bless you. And if you can't stay, God bless you.